City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, The Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings: Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted; demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted; disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted; banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted; backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search; health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted; cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room; individuals must remain seated; public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment; small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the sergeant-at-arms. City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, The Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings: Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted; demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted; disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted; banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted; backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted; clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search; health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted; cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room; individuals must remain seated; public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment; small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the sergeant-at-arms.
Good morning, members of the city council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you. Good morning, members of the city council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
iCloud back button. City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, The Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings: Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted; demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted; disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted; banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted; backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted; clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search; health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted; cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room; individuals must remain seated; public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment; small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the sergeant-at-arms.
Good morning, members of the city council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, so, you know, you can talk to him.
Good morning.
You can run down sometime.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year.
Same thing for Kevin.
Good morning. Please take your seats.
Go talk to him because when I talked to him just now.
Good morning.
That it's been working in the.
Silence.
Good morning. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Good morning, city council.
Good morning. The council will come to order. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Good morning, city council, and Happy New Year. Welcome back. Please log into your device. Raise your hand if you need help. Please log into your e-device. Raise your hand if you need help. The quorum is now open. I will now take a voice roll call based on those who are not here. Alderman Hall, not present. Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman Beal, Beal is present. Alderman Quinn, Quinn is present. Alderman Lopez, Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderman Moore is present. Moore is present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderwoman Scott, Scott is present. Alderman Burnett, Burnett is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vasquez, Vasquez is present. Alderman Riley, Riley is present. Alderman Knudsen, Knudsen is present. Alderwoman Clay, Clay is not present. Are all those who voted who wish? All right, the quorum is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are forty-two present. We do have a quorum. There is one alder that has requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59, and that person is Alder Person Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez. Madam Clerk, can we confirm that the alder has logged in online?
Yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, are you there?
I'm here.
Rodriguez Sanchez is present.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation of, it's been moved very well. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please verbally confirm. All right, there's been a roll call request for participation remotely for Alder Rodriguez Sanchez. Very well, Madam Clerk. Please take the roll call for remote participation for Alder Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
That was not from the body. That was from the gallery.
Oh, no, I think it was actually, Alderman Beal has requested a roll call vote for Rule 59 participation for Alder Rodriguez Sanchez. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
All right, the vote is now open. The vote is now open. Please use your device and log in. Hit refresh on your device so you'll see it pop up. It's not, it's not. It's prepared. It's not, it's not, it's prepared.
Yes, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Old-fashioned.
Very well, Madam Clerk, if that pleases this body, we'll just take a voice roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lasfatta, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dow, Alderman Robinson, Alderman Yancy, Alderman Hall, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Chico, Alderman Lee, Alderman Ramirez, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Gutierrez, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman. Not here. Alderman Moore, not here. Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Mosley, not here. Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Tito Lopez, Alderman Fuentes, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Talafaro, Alderman Cruz, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, oh, can't vote. Alderman Conway, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitz, Mitz, Spasado, Alderman Spasado. Alderman Spasado. Thank you. That's how I love doing my birthdays is roll calls. Alderman Nutrit, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Bilatano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Knudsen, Alderman Lawson, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Clay, Alderman Martin, Alderman Manahappenworth, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein. This is so old school.
Very well, there are forty-two ayes, zero, forty-two ayes, four nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. No, this motion fails. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by R.A. Antonis from Branch Community Church.
Good morning, my fellow Chicagoans. It's an honor to be here and thank you for welcoming me and thank you, Mayor and the Clerk as well. So, my wife and I grew up in the city. Our children have been raised in the city. We are product of the Chicago Public Schools. And I, it is an honor to be here. Having immigrated here from another country where there wasn't a representation, this is amazing to see the voice of the people here. I work with a church in the far north side, but also I'm a part of a new thing gathering of about a hundred and twenty-five churches in Chicagoland, where we try to break down barriers and bring help to the community. I'm also part of a financial institution called Thrivant where we try to help communities that have financial needs and desires and such to be well-educated. So I want to thank you very much for all your work.
You're welcome.
When my parents immigrated here, they were.
We were asked that you would deliver your invocation. Please, I don't mean to be disrespectful.
Yes, sorry about that.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's pray.
Thank you.
Father, thank you. Thank you for this gathering of men and women who serve you. We pray that they'll be equipped, that they will be able to start the year fresh, fully equipped, and cared for. I pray for their hearts to serve the men and women in their communities, help them to be focused, and continue to be strengthened by you. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing, please. Just for a moment that I would ask that we take a moment of silence in the memory of former President Jimmy Carter for all of those who have lost their lives to the terrorist attack in New Orleans on January first and for all of those who have lost their lives and homes in the tragic fires in Los Angeles. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting for public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker this morning is Roselda Acosta.
That speaker is not online. That speaker is not online.
Our next speaker is Nialy Fernandez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Nialy Fernandez, and I reside in Jefferson Park. I stand before you today to express my strong opposition to the proposed amendments to the Welcoming City Ordinance. As a DACA recipient who has called Chicago home for twenty-four years, arriving here at the age of fourteen, I am a proud graduate of CPS, the University of Illinois and Northeastern Illinois University. My journey is a testament to the opportunities this city offers to immigrants like myself. I vividly recall November ninth, twenty sixteen, when I was working at a Chicago middle school predominantly attended by immigrant students or those with immigrant parents. The atmosphere was heavy with fear. Students confided their anxieties about potential deportations under this upcoming administration. They fear being torn from the country they consider home disrupting their aspirations for a better future. Fast forward to November sixth of this past year, I was teaching first-year college students, many of whom are immigrants. They gestured about not seeing me next year, referencing the renewed threat of deportation. Their fears mirrored also my earlier students' concerns about derailed professional goals and the prospect of returning to countries where opportunities are scarce. In both instances, the sanctuary status of Chicago provided us semblance of comfort. Knowing that our city welcomes and protects immigrants offered reassurance that despite federal threats, Chicago stood as a safe haven. The proposed amendment, suggested by assisting federal authorities and upholding individuals involved in specific criminal activities, we can protect law-abiding immigrants from mass deportation. However, this perspective overlooks critical considerations. Crime rates among immigrants. Studies have consistently shown that undocumented immigrants have lower crime rates compared to native or citizens. Research indicates that immigrants are less likely to commit crimes that have lower incarceration rates than US-born individuals. This change will not only fail to protect our immigrant population, but will also also open the doors to racial profiling by allowing local law enforcement to collaborate with federal immigration authorities. We risk the targeting of individuals based solidly on their race, ethnicity, and perceived immigration status. This creates a climate of fear and injustice disproportionately affecting Black and Brown communities, even those who are US citizens or have legal status. The proposed changes could lead to violations to the Illinois Trust Act and infringe upon individuals' due process rights. By involving local law enforcement in federal immigration matters, we risk undermining state laws designed to protect our communities. Introducing these amendments may foster fear and uncertainty, leading to increased distrust between immigrant communities and local authorities. This erosion of trust can have detrimental effects on public safety as individuals may become reluctant to report crimes or cooperate with law enforcement, making our city less safe for everyone. Chicago has long been a beacon for those seeking a better future, a city enriched by the contributions of immigrants. To alter our sanctuary status is to betray the values of inclusivity and protection that define us. I urge you to vote no on the proposed amendment.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please continue. Please continue. Thank you very much.
Our next, our next speaker is Jody Whittaker.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council. I've spoken before you on multiple occasions about the dangers of fur farming and how packing thousands of wild fur-bearing animals into miserably tight spaces can cause drastic results where viruses can jump from animals to humans and create the next pandemic. This is a very critical reason why fur farming should be banned and why Chicago should pass the bill to ban the sale of new fur in our fine city. While I'm preparing this statement on this bitter cold morning of only eight degrees, there are beautiful animals languishing in cold metal cages on wire floors with no protection from the extreme temperatures or elements. They don't even have basic creature comforts. I'm going to read a few quotes from the Fur Free Alliance. Every year, tens of millions of animals are raised and killed for their fur. The vast majority of fur sold globally comes from farmed animals such as mink, foxes, raccoon dogs, rabbits, and chinchillas. Keeping wide-ranging predatory animals in small cages causes severe animal welfare problems such as self-mutilation and infected wounds. The confinement in tiny battery cages on fur farms prevents animals from expressing their basic natural behaviors such as running and hunting for food. The stress of the caging conditions and fear of humans causes animals to exhibit a high number of stress-related welfare problems. Numerous scientific reports have indicated that severe health problems are inherent to fur production and that animals on all fur farms have been found to exhibit physical and behavioral abnormalities such as infected wounds, missing limbs from biting incidents, eye infections, bent feet, mouth deformities, self-mutilation, cannibalism of dead siblings or offspring, and other stress-related stereotypical behavior. This behavior, as a result of stress, occurs on all fur farms and is expressed as pacing along the cage wall, repetitive circling, or nodding of the head. There are plenty of man-made synthetic materials that can keep humans much warmer than the skin of an animal who was born into this world simply to live in filthy squalor and then be killed in a horrific and painful manner. While I'm presenting to you now, I am in the warmth of my home and you all are in the warmth of Chicago City Hall. Please think about those who are so much less fortunate than ourselves, and let's take this easy step to prevent their suffering while at the same time helping to stop another epidemic. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and please stay warm.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is the Chicago Conservative.
Good morning, Brandon Johnson. I'm going to start off with this question. Who are you loyal to, the American citizens here in Chicago or the illegal immigrants here in Chicago? The sanctuary law that Brandon Johnson allowed has brought criminals, drug dealers, and now terrorists. We have terrorists in our cities now, some here in City Hall as we speak. Chicago Police investigated an explosive device.
Just a second. Hold, stop the time. Mr. Conservatives, could you just hold your comments for a second, please? Stop his time. Just stop his time for a second, please. Mr. Conservatives, could you just hold for a second? Those of you that are in the chambers today, that is your only warning. If there is another shout, if there's another shout-out during any presentation, I will clear the chambers. It's just that simple. If there is shouting coming from the chambers, I will put the meeting in recess and we will clear the chambers. Mr. Chicago Conservative, you may rebegin.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate that. Well, as I was saying, we have terrorists in our city now, some here in City Hall as we speak. There has been reports, Chicago Police investigated a discovery of an explosive device on Thirty-Fifth and King Drive at ten fifty-six a.m. and there, a bomb unit had to be called. And let me remind the people, in twenty-twenty-one, Al Qaeda said that they inspire to attack big cities like Chicago and New York with ghost guns and using trucks and things like this with pipe bombs. So this stuff is serious. And you want to know Brandon Johnson's response is, oh, I'm a bear fan. Oh, I'm a mental child. Look, are you with the CTU or do you want to be the mayor? Now, I know you are bad as a mayor, but let's just be honest, man. You got to choose one. You're either going to be the mayor, do your job, or you're going to be a part of the teachers' union. And something tells me that you're not going to be the mayor long, and you want that five million dollar pension when you retire with the Chicago Teachers' Union. But let me just continue. The people here, I see a lot of your supporters here today. And I'm going to ask you guys, what have the Democrats ever done for you for these past seventy years? What have the Democrats have ever done for you? I'm going to ask you guys, who's the bigger fool, the fool or the fool that follows the fool for seventy-plus years doing absolutely nothing for African-Americans such as yourselves? This won't stop at illegals. Our babies will continue to be victims of crime, murder, and things like drugs, gangs. If you vote the Democratic Party in, I'm talking, I'm talking about like Black people here making the same mistake over and over again. Don't complain when the streets aren't clean. Don't complain when nothing is getting done because you guys are still voting people like Brandon Johnson, and he does not care. He care more about, I don't what, what do you care about, Mr. Brandon Johnson? Do you care more about your pockets or do you care about the people of Chicago? You care more about illegals than the people of Chicago. We are from here. You prioritize them more than us. Like, what are you doing, man? You, you, you're surprised that you got a fourteen percent approval rating? You're letting in terrorists, man. This is serious. This is on top of what Lori Lightfoot has already done to Chicago. You're adding on to the problem. Do you want to help us or not? Because the people is getting fed up with this, man. The Democratic Party cannot save us. Only God can save us. Do you guys understand me? Only God can save us. These people, you guys are asking for handouts, and I hear you people over here saying, oh, oh, I don't need a big loaf. All I need is a little slice. These are the people you associating yourself with.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Celine Takai.
Yeah, I haven't even spoke. Okay. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. As a first-generation American, a daughter of immigrants, it's heartbreaking to see the city my parents immigrated to, a city they chose because it is a sanctuary city, is now at risk of no longer being a safe haven. My father fled Syria to save his own life. He went to Greece as an undocumented migrant, then to America, specifically Chicago, to escape being involuntarily drafted into the Syrian army. His brother remained in Syria, and he was killed, a martyr for a country that has long ignored the suffering of its own people under the dictator Bashar al-Assad, who is responsible for the death of over seven hundred thousand people and the displacement of over twelve million people. I often think of what would happen if my father did stay in Syria, but my story and my family's story isn't isolated. It is the reality of countless immigrants who come to Chicago fleeing unimaginable dangers, seeking a better life and safer life for themselves and their families. Immigrants do not leave their homeland unless they know that staying in their country is more dangerous than the uncertainty of immigration. To strip people of their security when they come to America seeking safety is wrong on so many levels, given that this country was built on the backs of immigrants and slaves. I did say, I said immigrants and slaves. It is certain to say that this country cannot prosper without immigrants, especially those who are undocumented and do all the jobs that Americans refuse to do. I urge you all to vote against any cooperation and collaboration between ICE and CPD. Voting in favor of this collaboration will strip families apart. I don't want to see my families and loved ones being deported and their lives being destroyed because Chicago is going back on its claim to be a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, call the next speaker, please.
Our next, our next speaker is Jordan Espaza Kelly.
Hello, City Council.
Good morning.
My name is Jordan Espaza Kelly, representing CARE Chicago, the Council for American Islamic Relations, and I am a resident of the Thirtieth Ward. I want to thank Ruth Cruz's staff for returning my call regarding the amendments to the Welcoming City Bill. Self-hating cowards such as Alders Ray Lopez and Tabarez want to turn our city into a hell for migrants. want to turn our city into a hell for migrants, who are not only Latin, by the way. CARE Chicago has 40 to 50 open asylum cases currently. What do we tell these people and families if we don't remain a sanctuary? Plus, our economy cannot handle mass deportations. We, as Chicagoans, must direct our energy and organizing towards those who are actually oppressing us and divesting from us. It is easy to turn new migrants into an enemy for us residents, but it's harder to look our own local government in the eyes and say, why? Why have you ignored us for 80 years? Why haven't you fully addressed homelessness, which predominantly affects Black Chicago residents? It is wrong to change this bill and reject people seeking a better life and would severely limit my organization's ability to take new immigration and asylum cases. Do not do your jobs haphazardly and put us residents in a predicament where we're fighting against each other. Put the work in and equally distribute resources so that we may all live pleasantly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Martin Levine.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Marty Levine. I'm a resident of the 48th Ward and I'm representing the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs. JCUA has for years been a strong supporter of immigrant rights and of the welcoming ordinance. But I come also this morning to speak personally. The last years of raging against immigrants to this country have reminded me of something I really had forgotten in many of my 60 years. My mother came to this country from Belarus. She came fleeing a country that was at war. She became fleeing because her father had to flee and came to this country before. And I have never thought about this until the last five years or so, when I began to wonder if I had to prove who my mother was as a citizen. I don't have a document for that. She is a citizen. She's voted in every election that she has been eligible to vote. But if you ask me to demonstrate that, I could not do that. And she would be at risk of being challenged if she was a jaywalker, if she had a motor vehicle crime and with the kind of changes you're proposing. I think about this often, more often than I should, as a 67, 68, now 78-year-old man. I also know that Chicago has been a welcoming city. In my work for the Jewish community and with the Jewish community, we were grateful for the city's partnership in resettling tens of thousands of people fleeing from the Soviet Union because they were being persecuted as Jews. This city was a home, became a home, and they flourished and helped build this city and the whole Chicago metro area. So I urge you to not give up because this is a moment of difficult politics. This is a moment when the forces in this country of hate and intolerance have been on the rise and turn to this city and see it as an enemy. It is not an enemy. It is only an enemy if it gives up on its values. So I urge you, if you come to vote on this proposal, to vote no. And I thank you for the opportunity of addressing you this morning.
Thank you very much for your comments.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Elias Sepeda.
Good morning. Thank you for the time to address you all today. My name is Elias Sepeda. I'm from Pilsen Defense and Access and I'm here to ask you to vote no on the amendment to insert language in our city code related to a welcoming city status. If you care about truth, you'll vote against this amendment because it is predicated on baseless fear-mongering about refugees, people illegally denied asylum application and who have already been subjected to human trafficking by the federal government and southern states to end up here in Chicago. If you care about combating racism, you'll vote against this amendment because it discusses racialized people, undocumented immigrants, as though we represent particular dangers to the city, when in fact undocumented immigrants have lower rates of criminality than the general population, in addition to having higher rates of entrepreneurship than the general population, and paying more in taxes per capita while receiving less in social services than citizens do. As sponsors of this amendment, we're truly concerned about criminal behavior affecting the city for decades. They might consider focusing on their own backers, some of whom are currently indicted on criminal corruption charges, instead of trying to streamline the persecution of their own people through immigration proceedings, which are civil and not criminal matters. If you care about public safety, you'll vote against this amendment because it is inspiring fear and terror in some of the city's most hard-working residents. Because as the Chicago Police Department itself has said in a recent memo, it erodes trust in law enforcement and will deter people from reporting crime to police. If you care about following the law, you'll vote against this amendment because it runs contrary to state law, specifically the Illinois Trust Act, and will pit municipal law enforcement against their colleagues within the state police. If you care about voters' will and the security of your own jobs, I suggest that you might consider voting against the amendment after you look around and see these packed chambers with your constituents who showed up as early as 7:00 a.m., mostly who oppose the measure and who will not lose energy on the issue or forget how you vote today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Leo Pargo.
Please, there will be order in the chamber.
My name is Leo Pargo. I'm a leader of the RevCom Corps for the emancipation of humanity here in Chicago. We're calling on all of the decent people to say no in the name of humanity and refuse to accept a fascist America, to stop Trump-MAGA fascist program. Saying no to mass deportations. Total somos ilegales. We are all illegals. This proposal is not city politics as usual. Fascism, yes. Fascism is being inaugurated next week. Trump, Coleman, and their local lackeys like Raymond Lopez and Tavarez are collaborators with this fascism and want to make an example out of this sanctuary city as a battering ram for massive roundups and deportations. All of the decent people who want to see an end to this oppression, to this madness, who don't want to see our immigrant brothers and sisters who have been forced to come here from all over the world, be routed up and hauled off and families destroyed because of that, need to stand up and flood the streets, January 20th and 21st, saying no, in the name of humanity, we refuse to accept a fascist America. They want to make an example out of Chicago, making it ground zero for mass deportations. Well, I'll tell you what, we do need to make Chicago an example of people finding their courage in their backbone, standing up with collective action and self-sacrificing struggle with the goal and aim of defeating this fascism. And just for everybody in the room today, particularly all of the bootlickers and MAGA Trump supporters here, all the Black people and Latinos in Chicago who are caught up foolishly calling for these deportations, quit sounding like the rabbit-white racist and wake up and get off of that garbage.
Thank you very much for your comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Clerk, please call our last speaker.
Our next speaker is Esther Martinez.
Hi, good morning, Chicago.
Good morning.
My name is Esther Martinez. I am with Illinois Coalition for Immigrants and Refugee Rights. I am here to speak against Alderman Lopez's proposed amendment to the welcoming city ordinance. Chicago government is smart and is strong. Alderman Lopez claims to want to protect undocumented people and only go after dangerous people. But the people he's targeting have only been arrested or charged or even have been convicted of anything. Anything turning people over to ICE will deny these people their fair day in court. They will be stuck in ICE detention, unable to pay a bond that will cost thousands of dollars if they get a bond at all and unable to show up for their court dates and fight the chains against them. What part of innocent until proven guilty does Alderman Lopez not understand? I urge the City Council to reject Alderman's attempt to deny people their basic constitutional rights, because that is what it is, constitutional rights, and to leave the welcoming city ordinance alone and start working on funding of local neighborhood schools, public housing, and what we need in Chicago, okay? I am a Chicago resident. I am not a terrorist. I am not a criminal. I am here for all because we need a government that serves our communities and what we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. You're right. There are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you very much for all the public comments. All right, this is now the portion of the meeting for resolutions. Thank you very well. Thank you, Sergeant Adams. Thank you all for your cooperation. This is the portion of the meeting for resolutions. Before we get into them, there are some acknowledgements. We have three Alders that have requested some acknowledgements. Sergeant Adams, could please restore order? Thank you. Those in the gallery, if you outburst again, I'm going to ask that the Sergeant Adams take you out, okay? Thank you. There are some acknowledgements here. First up, we have Alder Hatton, who wishes to honor the life of Chandra Libby, Director of the Homeless Outreach and Prevention for the Department of Family and Support Services. We will be honoring her legacy in a formal way in February at the council meeting. So I would encourage remarks besides Alder Hatton to be held until then. The chair recognizes Alder Hatton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody and colleagues. Early at the beginning of the year, so January 5th, we lost an amazing public servant, Ms. Chandra Libby. I think myself and my office were in weekly communications with Chandra. For those who don't know her in the public, Chandra served as a leader at the Department of Family and Support Services for 16 years. She was the director of the Homeless Outreach and Prevention Program or the HOP team. Chandra coordinated outreach through the city during the COVID-19 pandemic and she and her teams have served as frontline essential workers while the majority of residents were staying at home. They ensured that unhoused residents received basic needs and personal protective equipment and access to healthcare and housing. Chandra helped strengthen the city's overall encampment strategy by designing the multi-agency encampment initiatives that brought a range of supportive services, including mobile health units to encampments across the city for days at a time to work intensively with residents and to encourage them to move to shelter. Chandra designed and stood up Chicago's first low-barrier shelter. The Pilsen Shelter is dedicated to encampment communities to support residents who want to move into shelter, but maybe the shelters that are available to them don't provide the services that they need or have too many barriers for them to gain access. When DFSS launched accelerated moving events, these events have housed thousands of Chicagoans at this point, Chandra created the model for these events for unsheltered residents. Under her leadership since 2020, the DFSS HOP team has conducted 33 AMEs for unsheltered residents, moving people into permanent housing. Chandra was a true public servant who served thousands of unhoused Chicagoans and supported her team and partners compassionately over the years. She touched the lives of many DFSS staff and staff across other city departments and delegate agencies. The same can be said about her reach across Aldermanic offices and wards. She was the person everyone knew to call for help for Chicagoans who are experiencing homelessness in their time of need. To interim Commissioner McCauley, to the DFSS team, to the HOP team, we are so sorry for your loss. This is a loss for our entire city. Chandra will be missed and the legacy of her service won't be forgotten. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder Hatton. For this body, I would please ask that for the life and the legacy of Chandra Libby, if we could just take a brief moment of silence in her memory. A brief moment of silence in her memory, please. Thank you. Now, we have Alder Lawson, who would like to congratulate a civil servant, a public servant, Mimi Simon, on her retirement from the Department of Streets and Sanitation. The chair recognizes Alder Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to rise to support this resolution in honor of a career servant to the city of Chicago, Mimi Kautowski-Simon. She started in 1992 with the Department of Revenue. Right, she first encountered our vice mayor. I heard an interesting story about that earlier today. She moved to the Department of Planning and Development, where she helped create Mayor Daley's Business Express Initiative. She served as the Public Affairs Director for the Public Building Commission, the Department of Buildings, and the Departments of Streets and Sanitation, where she created the you-name-a-snowplow contest with over 10,000 annual Chicagoans participating and many of us, I think, in this room. She was known as someone who could certainly get things done. If you'll pardon my baseball pun, she's a utility player for our city and we are sorely going to miss her. In Marlene Hopkins' words, "Mimi was always known to turn work stress into work best." We are ever grateful for Mimi making the tough days more bearable. On top of that, she volunteers regularly at Miz Recordia, working with persons with developmental disabilities and those who are also physically challenged. While achieving so much success in her career, she has raised four children with her husband, Mike Simon, who is another city retiree we most know. Kids are here, Katie, Jen, Aviv, Thomas, and Gracie, her brother, former state senator, Dan Kautowski, and her mom, Jinx, that's right, all here to celebrate her. I just want to express the gratitude on behalf of myself and our colleagues for her over two decades, actually, three decades. Took a little break for some family of service to the city and I know we're going to miss her in the many roles and hats that she's worn. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's please, Mimi, do you mind standing? Where are you? We can acknowledge Mimi. Congratulations. Thank you, Alder Lawson. And now finally, one last acknowledgement. Alderwoman Coleman would like to acknowledge AKA Day. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. It is an oh-so-pretty day and it is the 117th Founder's Day of the first, finest, and best sorority, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, that Chairman Michelle Harris and I are very proud members to be a part of. We are headquartered here in the city of Chicago. I can reiterate how much of an impact our sorority has made, not only in this city but in our nation. Happy Founder's Day, soror, for surely we serve all mankind. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, Alderwoman Coleman. Now, we have three resolutions today commemorating the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, honoring the life of the great William Bill Beavers, and honoring the life of Jose Chacha Jimenez. Alderman Mitchell. Alderwoman Harris.
I move that we suspend the rules.
Thank you very much.
To allow the resolutions to be read.
Very well, there is a motion for temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions. Hearing no objections, so order. In the interest of time, respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of these resolutions and go straight to remarks from City Council. If you wish to speak, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution.
I stand in support of this resolution. Honorable members of the City Council and esteemed guests, the world will soon recognize International Holocaust Remembrance Day to reflect on one of history's darkest chapters and renew our collective commitment to stand against hatred and injustice. This year holds profound significance, as January 27th will mark the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, a grim symbol of the atrocities of the Holocaust and the resilience of the human spirit. Eighty years ago, as the surviving prisoners of Auschwitz were freed, the world was confronted with the unimaginable scale of human suffering and evil. Auschwitz was the largest Nazi killing center and concentration camp complex, where approximately 1 million Jews perished, along with around 70,000 Poles, 21,000 Roma and Sinti, 15,000 Soviet POWs, and 12,000 prisoners of other ethnic backgrounds. Auschwitz remains the most gruesome symbol, but the Holocaust in total saw the murder of 6 million Jewish men, women, and children, alongside millions of other people targeted for their race, beliefs, disabilities, or identity. The Holocaust is a reminder of the depth to which humanity can fall when prejudice and hatred go unchecked. Yet from the ashes of Auschwitz, survivors carried forward the flame of hope. They rebuilt lives, communities, and families, and they bore witness so that the world might learn and never forget. Here in Chicago, we are privileged to have survivors among us, whose courage in sharing their stories is an enduring gift to humanity. I hope many of my City Council colleagues here will join me on January 30th to tour the Illinois Holocaust Museum and hear those stories firsthand from the survivors who lived them. But the work of remembrance is not simply about looking back. It is about shaping our present and future. As we confront rising antisemitism and Holocaust denial and distortion across the globe, the urgency of this work cannot be overstated. Education, empathy, and action are our most powerful tools against hate. I represent Chicago's 50th Ward, which houses the largest Jewish community in the state of Illinois. Like any Jewish community, the 50th Ward remains haunted by the memory of the Holocaust. As a Jewish woman myself, my family was also deeply scarred, and my mother's aunts and uncles were all murdered by the Nazis. But this is not just important to the 50th Ward. As a city that cherishes its diversity, Chicago has a special responsibility to honor the memory of the Holocaust by standing firmly against bigotry in all its forms. We must ensure that the stories of survivors are not relegated to the pages of history, but remain a living force that inspires compassion and vigilance. On this solemn day, let us recommit ourselves to the promise of never again. Let us honor the memory of those who perished, celebrate the resilience of those who survived, and pledge to act as stewards of justice and humanity. Before I end, I want to recognize and thank our special guests, who worked to preserve the memory of the Holocaust and build a better world. We have with us today Bernard Cherkasov. Would you mind standing? CEO of the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center. An institution that keeps the lessons of the Holocaust alive through education and remembrance. Ari Saget. Representing 3G Chicago, an organization ensuring that the voices and stories of Holocaust survivors endure through the efforts of their grandchildren. Simona Citron. Daughter of Holocaust survivor Sephora Katz. And Andy Lowenthal. Son of the Holocaust survivor Michael Lowenthal, and both board members of the Illinois Holocaust Museum. Maya Gumaroff. From CJE Holocaust Community Services, who provide vital support and care for our survivor communities. And Nicole Wagner, representing AJC, the American Jewish Committee, a global advocacy organization that confronts antisemitism and upholds the democratic values that unite Jews and our allies. Thank you all so much for being here today. Your leadership and dedication are vital to ensuring that the Holocaust lessons resonate for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others, other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? All right, the chair recognizes Alderman Lawson and Knutson will follow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to rise to be associated with this resolution, to thank my constituent and friend Bernard Cherkasov for everything he's doing with the Holocaust Museum. For those of you who didn't get a chance to go last year, please go the end of this month. It's a new exhibit. There's a new story to be told, and that's one of the beautiful things about the museum. I was on a call a couple months ago, talking about some exciting new things happening, and I remarked how the Holocaust Museum Center is really meeting the moment, both in our nation and, I think, nationally right now. And so I just want to encourage everyone to participate. I don't know if my colleagues know where the pink triangle symbol comes from, but it's the Holocaust, and that's what members of my community were made to wear. And so we will always stand together, and in the same vein, never again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Alderperson Deborah Silverstein for constantly remembering the Holocaust and reminding us of the importance of it. Your leadership on the issue and fighting against antisemitism is so appreciated. I appreciate your partnership with getting Stop Hate Littering through this past year, and I just want to thank you. In this resolution, we recognize the day, but we also give context to, it was just 80 years ago, right? That's not very long. There's people in this room right now that are 80 years old, and we, as a society and as humans, need to look at history, learn lessons, and see how hatred can creep in with damning results. So we have to recognize Holocaust Remembrance Day, and I think, you know, we always challenge each other in this council to know that we're leading through love and fighting back against hate. So thank you, everyone in the box. I want to echo the thanks to Bernard, who's also a great friend. Bernard was instrumental also for the state's fight towards civil unions for LGBTQ people, which I'm forever grateful for. So thanks.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, your colleague, Alderwoman Deborah Silverstein. I also stand in solidarity with this resolution and recognition on remembrance. I really want to thank you for inviting us before to the museum to actually learn more about the experience. It's something that really fundamentally changed my life, to really be in the experience and feel it. And so when we think about the current hate in the moment, but also like the context in history, to think about a whole group of people that were dehumanized and criminalized just for being a certain group of people. Post-Holocaust, when trying to find a home, how the US itself would not accept people who were coming in that were Jewish, and it led to the same kind of persecution that, unfortunately, although we talk about remembrance, we don't seem to learn the lessons. As we keep continuing to see people, time and time again, be pushed away, be criminalized, be dehumanized, be persecuted, we see where this story takes us. And so when we think about the remembrance, it's understanding that we are all one community. We all stand together for each other, and if we don't learn the lessons, if we don't truly remember, we're going to continue to repeat these things, and they're going to show us the worst parts of our humanity. So please make sure you hold us accountable, that we always remember, and that we're able to show the same love, the same strength, and the same spirit that the Jewish people have shown in surviving through all of that, and that we keep that in mind when we think about all of our other siblings that are all going through similar persecutions around the world and even here in the city. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. To my colleague, you know, I give it to her, being so strong in this, in City Council, coming down here the last couple of years, and she's taken a lot of heat, and she's a strong, strong woman, believes in her faith. I support you every step of the way. You're constantly fighting for what's right. I've had the chance to bring all three of my children to the museum. We bring them when they hit eighth grade, and we just brought my last child last summer, and it's something that we believe is the most impactful part of their education and growth, to make sure, like my colleague had also mentioned, that it never happens again. A lot of us are here to support you, and we're here behind you every step of the way. And to everyone here as well, we support you. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I want to thank my colleague and friend, Alderwoman Deborah Silverstein, for bringing it forward. And to all of the individuals from the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center, Education Center, I want to reiterate there, whom I've supported since I, before I took this job here, in my role at United Airlines and doing global social investment. We were part of the group that made it possible for the virtual reality experience for Holocaust survivors to tell their story from the camps. I get chills just thinking about it, actually. So if you have not been to the museum, please go. Please experience that. I cannot understate the importance of preserving history and making sure that these stories are told and preserved. And I want to thank you for the work that you do in collaboration to tell other stories, like the one you're telling right now about the internment of Japanese-Americans in this country, the only group that's ever been subject to that in the United States. So I'm looking forward to bringing a group of young people to come to the museum to see that exhibit as well, and I will be there on the 30th. Thank you so much for all of the work that you do every day to ensure that these stories are told and that we are hopefully learning from the mistakes of the past, that we not repeat them again. So thank you all for everything that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this resolution. I want to thank my colleague, Alderman Silverstein, for inviting me to the Holocaust Museum. I've been there probably about four times. I mean, not only have I been there, I've took my family there, my staff. I've also asked many others to go. If no one has, but I encourage you to go. It's very important to learn about the struggles of every culture, and I also invite everyone here to learn about, to go. Go down to Memphis, even to the Lorraine Motels and learn about the struggles of what Black people had to go through. Also, I thought about, when I went to a Holocaust museum, I thought about the time when they took my uncle and put him in a casket, and had to drill holes in it, bring him to the north. It was amazing. I learned so much from the Holocaust Museum, and I thank you so much, because when I brought students over to the Holocaust, and again, we didn't have to pay for anything. We had lunch on you guys. It was great. I thank you so much, because it gave them an opportunity to learn about struggle. You know, coming from faith, and people have to understand, once we cut ourselves, we all bleed red, you know? So I thank you so much for bringing forth this resolution, and I'll continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Burnett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Also stand in support of this resolution. I had the opportunity to go to the Holocaust Museum, and coincidentally, the mayor sent me to Germany, and I had the opportunity to visit the Holocaust Museum in Germany, and the grounds where they have all of the, like, it's almost like coffins all over the grounds, and to also read all of the stories and see some of the videos. You know, it's very horrific what happened to the Jewish people back then, and your heart goes out. And I appreciate the fact that you all are constantly and consistently making people remember and not forget, because the way I see it, if they, if people would do something like that to one of us, they can do it to all of us, right? Whatever can happen to one can happen to all. And I pray that nothing like that will ever happen again, and all of this hatred that's in the world right now, for anyone, whether it's Jewish people, or African-Americans, or Latinos, or whatever the case may be, is not where we should be. And we should use this as an example to continue to work on love, kindness, and peace. So I just want to say thank you all for continuing to bring it to our attention. You know, it's amazing, I was just with Alderman Silverstein, with the menorah, celebrating the lighting of the candle, and got the opportunity to hear one of the survivors speak, her and her husband, and it was very profound to hear folks who have lived through that, who are still here and still sharing with several generations, so that they can know and recognize that we cannot allow things like that to happen again. So I stand in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in other hands. Very well, we want to acknowledge again all of the individuals who are in the box today: Mr. Bernard Cherkasov, Ari Saget, Dan Thalheimer, Andy Lowenthal, Simona Centron, Henry Jalen Jalen, Sharon Dornberg Lee, Maya Jumiraf, and Yonit Hoffman, Nicole Wagner. Thank you all for being with us today. And today, as we recognize the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and on this day, we reaffirm our commitment to standing against hate throughout the city of Chicago. It has been 80 years since Auschwitz was liberated, and the world learned of the full extent of the horrors of the Holocaust. In Auschwitz, it is estimated that 1 million Jewish people perished, along with tens of thousands of Polish and Romanian people, prisoners of war and prisoners of other ethnic backgrounds. International Holocaust Remembrance Day enables us to honor those victims and remember the remarkable stories, and of course, their history. It is important to continually share their stories, whether they are stories of tragedy and heartbreak, or stories of heroism and love shining through during the darkest times. These stories keep the memory of the millions of people who perished the Holocaust. It keeps their stories and their memories alive. And importantly, they remind us to be vigilant and unwavering in our fight against hatred. Let us mark this day not just with words, but with continued actions to make the city of Chicago a more unified, vibrant, and equitable place for all to live and thrive. While extremists around the world and our nation continue to sow division and hatred, many even try to deny the realities of the Holocaust, let us instead ensure that Chicago is always a beacon of progress, acceptance, and love. Here in Chicago, we will never deny or forget the Holocaust. Rather, we will commemorate it with actions that honor the victims and survivors, the Jewish community, and the people of this tremendous city. I'm honored to present this resolution today to the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center, along with 3G Chicago, in recognition of their work to educate people, all people, about the Holocaust and honor the legacy of its victims and survivors. Thank you. We appreciate your love and dedication to the people of the globe. Farewell, as these members prepare to leave the box. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
I move for the passage of this resolution.
Farewell. And I know you moved the passage of this in the omnibus. Very well. Thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next, we will consider the resolution as we honor the life of William Bill Beavers, former alder of the 7th Ward. Alderman Mitchell has asked to have open remarks, but we will allow for his family to get comfortable in the box. And Alderwoman Coleman would like to close. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, David. Good morning, Darcelle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, David. Good morning, Darcelle. I rise to support this, the resolution to pay respect and honor the former alderman of the 7th Ward, William Bill Beavers. April 12, 1983, while the world watched Chicago enthusiastically elect his first black mayor, the 7th Ward quietly elected what would later become a legend, the 7th Ward, William Beavers. William Beavers created the blueprint for how I function as an alderman today. His, his dedication to service, his dedication to the community, especially to the young men in the neighborhood who looked up to him as a father figure. Some of them affectionately referred to him as the old man. As a matter of fact, when I ran for alderman, at first Darcelle was not in the running, running race, so I had all the guys supporting me. But when Darcelle came out with this flyer that said, I'm back, all the guys left me to support Darcelle. But they told me, as long as, long as Darcelle's not in it, we support you, but they support Darcelle. Again, he set the blueprint with the development of what was a large tract of land on East 95th Street on Stony Island. He created structure, organization, and pride in the community. And it was, you saw the change once he left that post. So David, Darcelle, I want to thank you guys for sharing the old man with me. I want to thank you, Darcelle specifically, for the friendship. And you became big sister over time, always calling me and putting me in a good direction. And to know that, and you and I talked about this, that even though he's gone, it wasn't sad that day. It was actually, it was actually, it was actually a celebration. We heard all the stories of this straight shooter, well-dressed, strong guy. We heard all the stories. And then, and as we listened to him, those who knew him, there was a sense of pride that came over because we knew Bill Beavers. So again, thank you. Thank you for sharing him with me. Thank him. Thank you for, and I want to thank him, actually. I never got a chance to do it, for allowing me the freedom to become, to run for alderman. And I think you know what I'm talking about there. Because without that blessing, I probably wouldn't be here today. So everybody, the ones that don't know, never heard of Bill Beavers, he is a legend in his own right. We love him. We respect him. And I know he's looking, looking down on us, looking at how crazy and dysfunctional this chamber can be sometimes. But they had their own set of, set of issues. But I want to say thank you again for sharing Bill Beavers with us. And I'll turn it over to other people to talk about it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The saying was, leave it to Beavers in the 7th Ward. Prior to moving back to the West Side, I spent a number of years growing up in the 7th Ward. Beavers was the type of person had, didn't have a whole lot to say, but his actions spoke louder than anything that could have ever been done. Growing up, he was always considered the go-to guy. People in black Chicago, he was the go-to guy. If you needed something done, if you needed a, I guess we can talk about it now, needed a contract, needed a job, he was the guy to go to. And more or less was the, was, I would consider an alderman of aldermen, someone that who showed us, we stand on today, someone who has been talked about, someone who has been just, just a great leader in a ward in a community. So he took nothing for granted. He always went out and did his work. I can recall one time that my mother took a sign of a guy named Johnny Akoff, who was a perennial candidate in the 7th Ward. And when my father came home, he almost broke the window trying to take the sign out. Because again, we were a Beavers household and he had to remind my mother of that. Because Beavers took care of the community, he took care of us as kids playing basketball and baseball in Ecosol Park. And again, this is the type of an alderman that we want to respect, honor. And while, he may not have, he may not have said things in a, in a, what I'll call the most polished way, you knew what he meant and he meant what he said. And furthermore, as, as the Chair of the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which he did chair prior to leaving this council, he was someone that always wanted to make sure that our community had what it needed. So with that, Darcelle and the family, we thank you for lending him to us. And it was a pleasure to be a part of the 7th Ward. And, and you know, while Greg is there today, it's nothing like Beavers. Thank you.
Thank you. Would have made things complicated had you not moved. Okay, all right. That went right over everybody's. All right. Yeah, all right. Okay. Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett, who has always been a West North Sider.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution. You know, I'm blessed to have had the opportunity to serve with Alderman Beavers. And to Darcelle and the family, my condolences go out to you. You know, we go way back. I remember in 1990, when I was running for Chairman of the Young Democrats of Cook County. And we were the Young Democrats together, but I still had to go see the committeemen to get their support. And so I go to see your dad, and first thing he asked me, who's your committeeman? I say, George Dunn. He supporting you? I say, yes. He say, okay. And I was like, what do that mean? Do that mean you support me? And I just, he said, I said, okay. And I just left out. But you know, that's how, how he was. You know, he was straight to the point. He was very, not only was he a great alderman and took care of his ward and got things done and helped many people, especially African American businesses throughout the city of Chicago. Everyone would go to him for business. But he also is very strong with the Democratic Party, right? He, he sat on, he sat on several committees in the Democratic Party. He helped to make many people, helped many people to get elected throughout Cook County. He was just a man of his word. You knew what you, where you stood with him. He's going to be missed. And we need more Bill Beavers in the city council today. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. To Darcelle, my former seatmate and partner in crime, and to David, Commissioner Beavers, because I go with they left, Commissioner Beavers was alive and in full color and living color. So when you see Commissioner Beavers, and to former commissioner, former president of Cook County Board, Todd Stroger, when you see Beavers, you see a well-put-together man, a man who came in a room, who was prepared to be in whatever room he was in, and somebody who was going to say what he said with as few words as possible. But more than what I remember about him is that he was in his office every day. When he woke up at nine o'clock, and Darcelle will know this, that if he beat her there, it'd be a whole lot to be said. Because he was in that office every day. That goes to the fact that he wanted to know his community, be engaged in his community, and be a part of everything that happened in that community. That's what makes good leaders, people who are engaged in their communities, know their community leaders, work with their community, and are available and accessible to their community. And that's who Alderman Beavers was. And today, I am grateful that he led the way to make such a wonderful example for so many people to follow. But I am sorry that he is not here with us today, so we can't give him his flowers while he yet may live. But God got a better plan and decided to bring him on home. But I want to tell you, Darcelle, that I love you. And David, I love you. I'm just phone call away. If you ever need anything, thank you for the life that you allowed your dad to live. Because what people don't know is that most of the aldermen, they don't get to interact with their family because they too big to interacting with the rest of the universe. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I sit here and as we celebrate this special day, because it's Dr. King's actual birthday, I'm looking at a picture right now that has Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King in it, along with Reverend Clay Evans, who was my spiritual father and mentor, and Alderman Beavers, who was then a police officer back then. Everybody don't know, I think he served approximately 20 or 21 years as a police officer. And that's a feat in within itself. And for, for him to go from that to serving in a community as an alderman and then a commissioner is just astounding. It's, it's, it's an impact of him, not only as a leader, but as a person, as a person. And so I'm just honored to stand in support of this resolution. First, I want to recognize our friend and brother Sean Howard, and the reason why, when you going through something this heavy with such a giant, it's hard to put things together. And Sean, thank you for carrying this family through during that process. I commend you for that. And you did a yoman's job during the process. I appreciate that. But what I also like, you can give him a hand, absolutely you can. What I also appreciate that both of you took pieces of your dad. And a lot of people run from things that their parents do. David, you yourself worked for the state's attorney in law enforcement. And then you going on the public service side. That matters. And that means that there's something in you. But out of all this that I'm saying, you know what's so exciting and what's even better? And I didn't even know this until I was there and was reading obituary and everything. And I got a chance to sit with your dad a couple of times at the restaurant on 111 with email and everybody. He was born, or I was born, on his birthday, February 21st. And so now is he a Pisces, he's a special Pisces for being born on February 21st. But it's something, no, because it's something about you when you are independent, have your own voice, and you do not fear anything. And that I can shut up on, because that was Alderman Beavers. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to Alderman Darcelle Beavers and David Beavers. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to have your father for as long as we did. When we think about the ills in the African American community, your father worked to create opportunities for black entrepreneurs in this city. Countless efforts for folks to be business folk in this city, because he understood, in order for us to deal with the ills that we were facing, it came down to economics. And so when we look at what's happening around DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, your father stood strong because again, he knew that economics was how we were going to transform communities all across the city of Chicago. Darcelle and David, when you go through Midway Airport, or O'Hare Airport, you should smile and smile big. Because your father was the person that put this city on a road to make sure that we were in those airports. And putting black folk to work in those airports so they could take care of their families. That's your father's legacy. And so David and Darcelle, that legacy lives on in this body. And I look forward to working with my colleagues to make sure that we continue to move the needle forward for black folks around economics. And so I thank you both for allowing us the opportunity.
But can we just hold, please? Thank you. Please continue.
For allowing us the opportunity to have your father. And as I, as I close, when we talk about the ills in the African American community and we talk about economics, we also have to talk about the importance of having competent judges. And judges that understand driving while black. Your father understood that, which is why he created the subcircuits in the county of Cook. And so again, his legacy around economics, his legacy around creating subcircuits and competent judges, particularly African American judges, lives on. And so David, as well as Darcelle, thank you for continuing your father's great legacy. Blessings to the both of you and your family.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Anthony Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to support this resolution. And let me just say, there was no better role model to me in this city for African American aldermen than Alderman Bill Beavers. And I say that with a total humble spirit. You know, we don't have the relationships we used to have in this body. We all can disagree because we all come from different walks of life. And we all come from different parts of the city. So we're going to have different ideology when it comes to governing for our communities. But we always got along. And we always respected one another. When I first got down here, I would tell you, I was on the other side of Bill Beavers. Because I beat his best friend, Bob Shaw, and the Shaw Organization. And so when I got down here, he called me right away. He called me and said, Bill, come here. He said, let me just tell you this. He said, I knew you was going to win that race. He said, because I was in your ward every day. And I saw bill signs everywhere. And I knew you were gonna beat my friend. So he said, but what I want you to do, and two aldermen, who I have so much respect for in this body, two aldermen at the time, told me to sit here, learn, listen, and understand this body. And that was Alderman Bill Beavers and Alderman Lorraine Dixon. And they were both powerhouses in this city. So the legacy that they are leaving behind, we're struggling, y'all. We're struggling with the leadership that they portrayed for what we need in this city. Another thing that Alderman Beavers told me, he said, Bill, he said, if you're going to be down here a while, he said, what you need to do is help make 10 millionaires to empower your community. I didn't understand what he was telling me at that particular was telling me at that particular time. When you talking about creating 10 millionaires, what you're doing is creating wealth in your community. Because if you create one millionaire and they create a business, they're gonna create jobs and opportunity for other people in your community. And your community is now building wealth. That was the epitome of Alderman Bill Beavers. That's all he cared about was how to empower our community. And so, my 25-plus years that I've been here, I've been trying to just emulate and do the same. But we're falling short. We're falling short. Because we're looking at self instead of looking at our communities. When you look at self, you may get an extra street or two in your ward, but you're not empowering our community. And so, what I need you all to take away from just a few words that I'm trying to say about my friend Bill Beavers, he was serious about our community. He was serious about empowering African American work in this, in this city and wealth. So, let's put our differences aside. Let's put our ideologies aside and come together for once and start making the movement because you all, blacks are still only getting a fair share of the contracts in this city. We're only getting, we're going backwards. We're not going forward. So, let's come together and move forward to help our community. Because when you talk about the crime and education and all those things, it all starts with finances, y'all. It all starts with financing. And he understood that. There were several things that Alderman Beavers at the time, being Chairman of the Budget Committee, knew he couldn't say. Because he's Chairman of the Budget Committee. But he would slide me a note and say, "Hey, Bill, ask this question." To bring light of injustice here in this city. So, he was very crafty on getting his point across. And so, I want to thank both of you all for the sacrifice that you all made to allow us to learn, listen, and move this city forward under the leadership of your father. Now, he would call me all the time. And we would talk all the time about what's going on in this body. And I'm gonna tell you, he wasn't happy. He was not happy. But he still would call me and say, "Bill, you need to do this. You need to do that. You need to try another angle. You need to come from a different way in order to obtain the results that you need." And so, I will always honor and cherish your father for what he did to help me. And I'm going to continue to his legacy. And with the legacy, I went and bought a new suit to represent your father. Because there was no better dresser in the city of Chicago than Bill Beavers. So, in honor of him today, I did go purchase me a new suit. But I really appreciate everything that he did for us in this city. And his legacy will live on. So, thank you all so much. God bless you. And I love you both.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to the legacy of William Bill Beavers before Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman closes? Seeing no other hands for the closing remarks, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe it was debated when we were in budget session. It was stated that, well, no one worked with him. No one knew who he was. So, why should we change our meeting, this special meeting, for his funeral? And so, I saw that as an opportunity to perhaps share the life and what William Beavers meant to the city of Chicago. To Alderman Darcelle Beavers, to David, Denise in her absence, Dewan and Dylan, granddaughter, great-grand and grandson, President Todd Stroger, to Sean Howard, the spokesman, who's still working for Beavers in his absence. When I read the four pager on Chairman Beavers, I did not know how instrumental he was in making sure that Eugene Sawyer became the mayor after Mayor Washington on this floor when the debate of the great, of the 29 versus everybody else. Darcelle, you and I share something very special because we, we have sat in the same seats as our parents, literally and figuratively. And some would think that it is easier being an elected official's child, but it's never easier when you have big shoes to fill. And I want to say, Darcelle, you did a great job in being the first to fulfill the same seat as your father, even before Alderman Sawyer and I did. The best advice that he gave me to Alderman Bill was to sit down. Carrie told me to shut up. And they both said to learn that budget. And for the last five years, I have not missed budget hearings because of the importance and learning, follow the money, follow the dollars, and you make sure you bring some back home. In 2007, that was a rough year for my family. And Chairman Beavers did not forget my mother sitting right there. And if it were not for him, I don't know where, what could have happened in 2008 and 2009 when there was a dark cloud over our family. He brought some light. And my mother then became an assistant to the Cook County Board at the time. So, President Stroger, I'm going to publicly thank you for giving my family another opportunity at public service. To be unapologetic, to be unapologetically black, to be intentional about fighting and working for legislating black wealth, Chairman Beavers set the tone. They will, there will never be another Will Beavers. They don't make them like them. They don't dress like them. Tony, you did a good job, but you'll never be Beavers. Jason, you doing better over there, but there'll never be another Beavers. When I think of, of the ongoing service, of the word protector, and I don't think I've ever been to a funeral that was as funny and as like a history lesson of Chicago, then, then his ongoing service. And it was so appropriate at the ending moment when Cheryl sang the song, "I Did It My Way." Chairman Beavers for 51 years did it his way. 51 years, 18,615 days, 446,760 hours, 26,805,600 minutes. He did it his way, unbought and unbossed. So, on behalf of the Chicago Automatic Black Caucus, because Chairman Beavers was one of the founding members of the Black Caucus in the 80s, I want to bestow this stash upon you so that you will always, always have a special place. You and your father will always have a special place, not only here in this council, but here in our Automatic Black Caucus. God bless you. I love you. And happy pre-founders' day to the Zetas on tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. President.
As the bestowing of the stash ceremony commences, we do want to acknowledge, again, all of the loved ones that represent the impeccable William Bill Beavers. Darcelle Beavers, thank you. David Beavers, Denise Ewing, Dewan Brown. Of course, we have in the box two, three amazing elected leaders. Thank you, Alderman Rod Sawyer for being here. Thank you, Alderwoman Bishop Shirley Coleman for being here. And thank you, State Representative Alderman, Cook County Board President Todd Stroger for being here. Thank you, Sean Howard, for being here. You know, William Bill Beavers began his service, as Alderman Moore indicated, protecting the people of this city as a police officer, serving for 21 years. And then, of course, as Alderman Mitchell expressed in 1983, was a transformational year for the globe. He continued his service in the city when he was elected as Alder of the, Alderman of the Seventh Ward, representing the South Southeast Side. Truly one of our more dynamic, progressive black aldermen and continued his work to propel black businesses, which has been expressed, advocated voraciously for ownership while giving them opportunities to engage in city government and contracts. He continued his work, of course, as an elected leader to the Cook County Board of Commissioners. He did that in 2006, to make sure, to ensure that voices, particularly black voices, would be heard in government and, of course, in business. We are truly grateful for the legacy of an incredible leader, a champion, made his mark in this beloved city. The city truly loved him. And he loved us. So, on behalf of the entire city of Chicago, of course, we still extend our deepest condolences to you, the family, to all the friends of the great Alder Cook County Commissioner, William Beavers. You know, I think it's also important to just lay out one of the most dramatic political moves in the history of Chicago. And black political power was preserved because of what William Beavers was able to do. So, I would encourage all to never forget that moment where the preservation of leadership, the preservation of voices was upheld because of William Beavers. And so, with that, the Alder of the Seventh Ward, I think it's very fitting to call for the passage of this resolution with a standing vote, please. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move, that week, honor former Alderman Beavers by rising.
Rising vote. Very well. To William Beavers. Very well. Thank you. We have one final resolution as the Beavers family finds their way out of the box. We thank them for being here. And there is one more consideration for a resolution that honors the life of Jose Chacha Jimenez. We thank the Jimenez family for being patient. I know it's been a long day for you all this morning as we now move into the afternoon. Alder Fuentes has asked to have the opportunity for open remarks. I will just give folks just a moment to settle. Are all the individuals in the box now? Very well. Very well. The Chair recognizes Alder Jesse Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the distinct honor to be the chief sponsor on this resolution. When I learned that Jose Chacha Jimenez had passed, I was moved to ensure that this body honored someone like Chacha Jimenez. Born in Caguas, Puerto Rico, later making roots here in Lincoln Park, Chicago, Jose Chacha Jimenez turned a gang, the Young Lords Organization, into the most powerful political and social movement here for Puerto Ricans across Chicago and ultimately across the Puerto Rican diaspora. Rooted in his mission to fight gentrification, poverty, police brutality, housing inequities, Chacha took a lot of the framework of the Black Panthers and was mentored by someone like Fred Hampton to be able to build a Puerto Rican diaspora and community here in Chicago. You see, Jose Chacha Jimenez read about colonialism and read the brilliance and the intelligence of Malcolm X while serving a short sentence in Cook County Jail. Someone who had become a part of a gang because of social inequities and systems that had unfortunately disenfranchised and marginalized people like Puerto Ricans on the North Side. Chacha took that sort of empowerment, that sort of education, and he built a framework and a community that was going to ensure his community could be better for it. And it is because of people like Jose Chacha Jimenez that I can be the older person of the 26th Ward, representing the largest Puerto Rican constituency here in the city of Chicago. You see, I'm not very different than Chacha Jimenez. I grew up on Quezzi between Beach and Hurst, right across the street from Humboldt Park, growing up in a family that had been embedded into the Latin Kings gang. But like Chacha, when I read about colonialism, self-determination, the system of oppression, and how poverty had impacted my family and that ultimately led my mom to a drug addiction, I took that same knowledge and power to transform my community, became a part of a campaign called Humboldt Park No Se Vende, Fighting Gentrification and Building Affordable Housing. You see, because that is what a community like mine deserves. But I am only here because of people like Jose Chacha Jimenez. And today, we are extremely honored to have people in the box that are loved and were honored by people like Jose. And we have Dr. Jackie Lazoo from DePaul University, who spent so much of her time articulating the work of Jose Chacha Jimenez for the world to be able to understand. Dr. Lazoo, can you please stand up for this body to recognize you? We also have Melissa Jimenez, the daughter of Jose Chacha Jimenez, if you can stand to be recognized. And we have Daisy Rodriguez, the beloved sister of Jose Chacha Jimenez, if you can stand. Jose Chacha Jimenez left a legacy and an imprint on the Puerto Rican community. And a community like Humboldt Park continues to be organized because of the work of Jose Chacha Jimenez. So, today, we remember the life, the legacy, and the champion that was Jose Chacha Jimenez. And I'm proud to be associated with this particular resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution from highlighting the unfair treatment of the Puerto Rican community in the 70s, to helping elect Harold Washington as mayor of the city of Chicago. The legacy of Jose Chacha Jimenez is one that has had an impact on our city for generations. I'm especially honored to speak to this life today as he was involved with my godmother, Mary Lou. And this is personal to me, and it warms my heart to have this memory and legacy be officially recorded in our city's history through this resolution. At a time when no Latino leader held a substantial power, position of power, Chacha Jimenez brought hope to the community. His work highlighted the unkept promises of the government at the time and sparked a movement that could not be ignored. He forced then-Mayor Richard Daley to acknowledge the Puerto Rican community and Latinos as a whole. But his work went well beyond our city limits, influencing politics in New York City, gaining national attention, and contributing to the forming of the Rainbow Coalition. When we say that the country watches for what Chicago does, this is an example of that. In the summer of 74, at a press conference in Lakeview, where he would declare his campaign for alderman, Chacha Jimenez exclaimed, quote, "It is time, especially for Latinos who have represented neither in the city nor in state government, to take political power." While his aldermatic run would fall short, the impact he has had on inspiring the next generation cannot be ignored. He played a crucial role in Mayor Harold Washington's campaign and built diverse coalitions that bridged the gap between groups that were often divided. Today, we are here in this chamber with over a dozen Latino elected officials, a diverse body of council members. And though we may not always see eye to eye, our very presence in this chamber is a testament to the efforts and battles of those who came before us. I thank my colleague for introducing this resolution today and thank our body for hearing it. Let us continue to push for our communities, for the success of public institutions, and carry out the work that generations before us laid out. May the memory of Jose Chacha Jimenez be a blessing to his family, friends, and our city as a whole. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution. Jose Chacha Jimenez was a visionary leader dedicated to creating a better future. dedicated to creating a better future for his community. As a leader of the Young Lords, he transformed the group from the Puerto Rican gang into a powerful activist organization. Under his leadership, they provided free breakfast programs, advocated healthcare access and education, and affordable housing, along with more community services. His joining of the Rainbow Coalition in partnership with the Young Patriots Organization and the Black Panther Party, uniting people from diverse backgrounds to combat racism, inequality, poverty in Chicago. This collaboration remains a powerful symbol of unity and social justice. Beyond Chicago, the Young Lords expanded to New York, advocating equity, safety, and better health for Latino neighborhoods. They embrace inclusivity and consider themselves multi-ethnic organization. Today, we honor Jose Chacha Jimenez for his unwear and commitment to justice, his leadership, and his love for his community, especially for Humboldt Park. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution as we honor the extraordinary legacy and contributions of Jose Chacha Jimenez. You know, Jose Chacha Jimenez got to work in the Old Town Lincoln Park community, fighting against the displacement and the gentrification that was impacting Chicago's Puerto Rican community. And it's extraordinary that he became a national leader in the movement for liberation of all oppressed people because it wasn't supposed to turn out that way. He wasn't educated about liberatory movements in elementary school. He wasn't taught to have pride in his community. As a matter of fact, everything around him told him that he was less than, told him that he should not succeed in life. And it makes me so happy to see that beautiful royal purple color in the box because Chacha and his contemporaries decided that the color for the Young Lords Organization would be that regal purple because he knew that his Puerto Rican people had an inherent worth and that rather than have that sense of inferiority, that they should be proud in who they are. And so Jose Chacha brought people together in the community, brought his Boricua community together, and formed this organization. And he achieved something that so many people in the city have wanted to achieve before. He started something here in Chicago and got it exported to New York City. See, in New York City, there was a group of intellectuals, of college students, that were reading different things and learning about how they and their community could come together and get free. And in that work, those Puerto Rican intellectuals and those Puerto Rican college students learned about Chacha and the work that he was doing here in Chicago, and they said, "We should start our own YLO. We should start our own Young Lords Organization, our own chapter here in NYC." And so they took the idea, the brilliant idea of this street kid here in Chicago, and they helped make it an international and national movement. Jose Chacha Jimenez took over a church alongside the other Young Lords in Lincoln Park in Old Town and began offering services to the community. And my mother, a young Mexican-American woman growing up in Old Town, she was a little bit too young to join them, and she was a little bit of a goody-two-shoes, so she wasn't going to join them, and she was a little bit scared. But that work, she observed it. She saw it, and it impacted her own life and impacted her own actions in the future as she herself became a social activist. That's just one example of the people that Jose Chacha Jimenez touched and the way in which he brought so many people, not just in the late sixties, but over many generations, into activism for social justice in a better world. It should not be lost on us that we're honoring Jose Chacha Jimenez in this chamber in Chicago City Hall today. Because throughout his early activism, it was the Chicago Police Department and their Red Squad that so often attacked him, that so often sought to throw roadblocks in the way of his work. But despite the work of city officials, Chacha remained. Chacha persevered, and we are honoring his legacy today. This past Monday, we came together as a multiracial coalition. We had the Chicago Urban League, we had immigrant rights activists, we had advocates against domestic violence, and they all came together to stand up for Chicago remaining a sanctuary and standing up for our immigrant brothers and sisters. And at that press conference, I felt Jose Chacha Jimenez there. Because that press conference and that coalition represented the multiracial organizing that Jose Chacha Jimenez knew had to be at the heart of any movement for liberation. See, Jose loved his community, but he knew that that love for his community should not mean that he should then seek to exclude or step on everybody else. He understood that the love for his community should mean that he should love all communities. He understood that none of us are free until all of us are free. And for that reason, and for that reason, he worked to found the multiracial coalition, the Rainbow Coalition alongside the Black Panther Organization and alongside the Young Patriots organizing in Uptown among Appalachian whites. Jose Chacha Jimenez was a true revolutionary, a true change-maker. May he rest in peace and power. And I know that we will achieve a day that Puerto Rico is free and that all of the Puerto Rican people are free as well.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I didn't want this event to go on with just Northsiders speaking. I want to make sure the Southside is representing. There are part Puerto Ricans on the Southside. I was raised in La Vida, so you know, most folks think of me as Mexican-American, but the fact is, my family, as part of my family originates from Aguadilla, Puerto Rico, and I stand with my brothers and sisters on the Northside to recognize our brother, who was very much a mentor to many who founded my organization and those I work with. He was highly admired, highly appreciated. I will not be as eloquent as my other brothers and sisters here today, but I do want to be able to rise and say that his presence was not just felt in one sector of the city, but all over our great city. And to be quite honest, the whole diaspora of the Puerto Rican community, mis sentimientos mas grandes a su familia, and I thank God for giving us such a great leader. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? All right, for the closing remarks, then, Alderman Sincio Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am very grateful that Alder person Jesse Fuentes has bring this important resolution to the city council. To the family of our dear Chacha Jimenez is a tremendous loss for the city of Chicago, but I could not think of a better day to honor Chacha Jimenez, thus the very same day as the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr. Mr. Chacha Jimenez was a mentor indeed for many people across the city. I consider Mr. Chacha Jimenez a mentor of many of us. I met Chacha, as many people call him, on a trip to Pilsen when he shared with us lessons of the Young Lords when they were battling the landmark designation in Lincoln Park. Ironically, we defeated that very same landmark designation in Pilsen. So we credit Chacha for helping us fight gentrification in our community, even though there may be fights where we lost. His character, integrity, and determination to fight gentrification, to fight displacement and injustices across the city was always steady, fast, and willing to lend a helping hand, no matter where they come from, no matter what the neighborhood was, he was building coalition. There was no secret that Chacha was the first Latino Puerto Rican to challenge the democratic machine in nineteen seventy-four, running as Aldermanic candidate when others looked the other way. He is steady, fast, challenged gentrification, run for office, and showed the power of the Latinx community in nineteen seventy-four. He gathered forty percent of the vote and helped us later to elect the first black mayor of the city of Chicago, building a coalition with the Puerto Rican community, with the Mexican community, a rainbow coalition that delivered the first black mayor in the city of Chicago, Mayor Harold Washington. That is the legacy of Chacha Jimenez. Today, as we see the winds of division and hate, when we see the winds that also tried to divide us in the eighties, in the seventies, and the sixties, we remember Chacha Jimenez. Chacha Jimenez represents the values of the city of Chicago. Chacha Jimenez, Mayor Washington, and many others in a coalition deliver the sanctuary city status to the city of Chicago, visionaries, pioneers, with a long and strong legacy in the city of Chicago that are a lesson for us to continue to fight for a beautiful city. That's what we say. Chacha vive, la lucha sigue, here in city council, from Pilsen for the community and immigrant port of entry that I'm proud to represent. We will not be here if it wasn't for the fight that Chacha took for many years, for many decades. He never forgot Chicago. He helped us build the city, and because of him, we'll continue to fight fascism, gentrification, the forces of division because of that legacy that leaves us strong together more than ever before. Thank you to the family for sharing him with us. Thank you for allowing us to share such a beautiful legacy that leaves us strong, and his legacy today in this resolution remind us of true justice, integrity, fight for civil and human rights. Thank you, Chacha Jimenez, and thank you to his family.
Thank you. Thank you for all of those expressions. I do want to thank you all again. I do want to acknowledge again the family that is in the... Please. I do want to honor the family that is here again today. Thank you to Daisy Rodriguez, Melissa Jimenez, Dr. Jacqueline Lazu. You know, as we speak to this resolution and commemorate the life and legacy of Jose Chacha Jimenez, I think it's actually quite appropriate that this resolution is raised at a moment in time where our challenges are immense. And there are reasons for some people to be afraid. But I'm so grateful that we have the life and the legacy of Chacha, who is an example to what is possible even through dark times and when fear is abound. He showed us what it means to not only uplift a community and uplift voices, but to challenge the forces of darkness to ensure that light will prevail. With his vision and determination, he transformed the Young Lords, a street gang, into a powerful political operation, social and political grassroots movement that advocated for the rights of Chicago's Puerto Rican community and his neighbors and even broader than his neighbors. The Young Lords brought awareness to the issues that were affecting their community, but quite frankly, was affecting communities even beyond, including police brutality, gentrification, and all racial inequities. Chacha took in a special, strong stance against gentrification in Lincoln Park. His voice and his power united this city against the challenges and inspired generations that exist today. In addition to protesting systemic inequities, the Young Lords Organization, or YLO, served their community by filling the critical gaps to ensure that neighbors, fellow Latinee residents could thrive in our city. Under his leadership, the YLO established, again, from free breakfast initiatives, community health clinics, cultural centers. I think it's actually quite appropriate that just on yesterday, we cut ribbon in the Twenty-Sixth Ward, building an entire health hub to transform not just the neighborhood in the Twenty-Sixth Ward and Humboldt Park, but to create access to healthcare for generations to come. Their impact extends well beyond the generation that raised them, but it also extends beyond the borders of the city of Chicago. His run for Alder that opened up an opportunity for Mayor Harold Washington to run for mayor demonstrated the power of Black and Brown and White and Asian, young, old, rich, poor, a movement that is still very much alive today. Those forces that wish to interrupt that progressive, dynamic, broad coalition still gets to be met by the life and legacy of Chacha. His lifelong work in the Puerto Rican community, his lifelong work as a positive impact on our entire city, he leaves a more resilient and united Chicago that continues to work tirelessly because of his commitment. Today, we not only recognize his profound contributions, we say thank you to Chacha. By his unwavering pursuit for equality and justice, may the life and legacy of Chacha not only live forever, let's ensure that the Jimenez family will always be recognized as a part of that legacy to made it possible for this room to look like it looks today. So please remain. Alder Jesse Fu... Alderman Greg Mitchell, Alder Jesse Fuentes, has put forth a motion for the passage of this resolution by a rising vote. By a rising vote. Thank you. Again, thank you to the family. Alderman Mitchell, an emotion to re-return to the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, communications, Madam Clerk.
...from his honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the city council, the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the comptroller, I transmit here with an ordinance approving municipal depositories for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the chief financial officer, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to financial public infrastructure in the city. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of TIF funds for the rehabilitation of the former Diplomat Motel to the House of the Haven on Lincoln Pilot Project. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of TIF funds for the acquisition of rehabilitation of a property located at twenty-five oh eight dash twenty-five thirty-eight West Twenty-first Street. Favorable consideration, ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with our ordinance, amended TIF works, a workforce development program proposing various changes. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the budget director, I transmit here with a... herewith a fine nine-twenty-five amendment. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing favorable tax incentives classifications for specified properties located within the city. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of amended redevelopment agreements to expand existing city lots for working families' projects. Your favorable consideration, this ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration, this ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the acquisition of properties located at Troop Street and Fifty-Ninth Street in support of the Inglewood Nature Trail Project. Your favorable consideration, the ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an execution of a pedestrian access easement agreement on city property located at sixty-twenty-five South Roads. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of development... request of Commissioner Fire, Department of Fire, I transmit here with... I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code authorized the fire department to accept grants of personal property. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Ivan Capafeli as Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments at various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Stephanie D. Wilding as a member of the Board of Health for a term effective immediately and expiring April 30th, 2027, to succeed Carmen Varraga, Varragara, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Innovation. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd heremit here with appointments to the Chicago Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Gina Piemont as a Commissioner of the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability for a term effectively immediately and expiring June 23rd, 2028, to complete the unexpired term of Kelly Presley, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Police District Councils. Favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Advisory Council and Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, verily to yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council of the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Executive Order Number 224-2 regarding Declaration of Trans- Transmicide Emergency Establishment or Working Group on Transmicide Protections for Transgender and Gender-Diverse Communities. A termination certificate of City of Chicago regarding revolving line of credit agreement by and among RBC Capital Markets LLC and Royal Bank of America, as to note on December 29th, 2021, an aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $225 million. Termination certificate of City of Chicago regarding Wells Fargo Bank National Association, as to note of December 29th, 2021, an aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $265,500. Notification of a sale of City of Chicago General Obligation Bonds Refunding Series 2024B. Notification of sale of City of Chicago Sales Tax, uh, Securitization Bonds referred to Series 2024A and second lien Sales Tax Securitization Bonds Refunding Series 2024B. Notification of a sale of City of Chicago Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds, Thrive Exchange South ISW Project Series 2024A and Series 2024B. An annual report of the Department of Transportation regarding non-ordinance loading zone activities, Office of Inspector General's Quarterly Report of Investigations and Operations City of Chicago for period ending December 31st, 2024. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, also inform the City Council of all those matters which were considered by the City Council in the regular meeting held on December 11th, 2024, to be required by state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on January 15th, 2025, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the Council that all those matters were considered by the Council at the recessed regular meeting held on December 13th, 2024, and reconvened meeting on December 16th, 2024, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on January 15th, 2025, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that the various ordinance which, that various ordinances which were passed by the City Council December 16th, 2024, regarding the refunding tax levies, budgets, and service provider agreements for special service area 1733, 4850, 51, 52-2021, 6063, 71, 72, and 77, which requested to be published in pamphlet forms, were published in special pamphlet form on December 18th, 2024. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications which are reports requiring City Council action, zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against City of Chicago which referred to Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Kingdom Baptist Church at 3001 North Central Avenue's Chicago Landmarks referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, direction of December 13th, 2023, City Council Journal of Proceedings which referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up for our committee reports, we'll start with our finance committee. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Uh, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on January 13th, 2025. The following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Lamont Robinson concerning fee waivers for all permits related to the Metropolitan Tier and Exposition Authority for the renovation of the Hyatt Regency McCormick Place Hotel located at 2233 South King Drive in the 4th Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by a roll call vote.
Very well, seeing no hands. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The vote is now open, the vote is now open. Please use your e-device if you need to hit refresh, the voting is now open. I will now call on those who have not used the e-device for a voice vote. Alderman Lasbada, not present in chambers. Alderman Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderwoman Hadden, not present in chambers. Have all those who voted who wished, okay? We'll now close the vote. Oh, wait. Very good timing. Alderwoman Lasbada, Lasbada is a aye. Alderwoman Hadden, Hadden is a aye. You got in by the nick of time. Any other Alders out there?
Alderman Robinson.
Oh, Alderman Robinson? Alderman Robinson is a aye. Okay, that should be everyone. And the vote is closed.
Thank you. There are 50 yays, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the Redevelopment Plan for the Diversity slash Chicago River Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project and Plan to provide for the redevelopment of the expanded area in the 32nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Taylor, who wishes to be reported as voting no on this matter.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the designation of the Expanded Diversity slash Chicago River Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area in the 32nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Taylor, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning the adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing Plan for Amendment Number One to the Redevelopment Plan for the Expanded Diversity slash Chicago River Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area in the 32nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same vote, with the exception of Alderman Taylor, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number five A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Joseph Weems, a minor by, and through his mother and/or next best friend Sharon Weems, and Sharon Weems versus William Reynolds, special representative of the estate of E. Dion Boyd, deceased in City of Chicago, a municipal corporation in the amount of $130,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Spazado, who wishes to be recorded as no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number five B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Bertha Carranza, administrator of the estate of Jose Luis Carranza Chacon versus City of Chicago, in the amount of $975,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Quinn and Lopez, who wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Be recorded as a no also.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
No.
Very well, the chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Like to be recorded as a no, Mr. President.
Hearing no other objections despite the division, this motion, so ordered.
Item number five C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Patricia Porter as special administrator of the estate of Lachisel Thomas, deceased, versus City of Chicago Lawrence Kerr, Jose Lopez, Orlando Hernandez, in the amount of $4.5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Quinn, Riley, and Spazado, and Alderman Curtis, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
Very well, thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Then I'd also like to be recorded as a no.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
I like to be recorded as a no as well.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Please record me as a no.
Well, seeing no other objections despite the division, so ordered.
Item number five D is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Ben Baker and Clarissa Glenn versus City of Chicago et al. in the amount of $7.5 million. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number five E is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Mark Maxson versus John Duffy et al. in the amount of $8,750,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five F is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Thomas Sierra versus Reynaldo Guevara et al. in the amount of $17.5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is a communication transmitting reports of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of December 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Items numbers seven and eight consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago and the denial of payments various, of various small claims against the city of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed in passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number nine is a proposed order authorizing charitable solicitation on the public way for Save the Children Federation, Inc., from January 15th, 2025 through January 15th, 2026. This will be placed on file with the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you again. For the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, the chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held a meeting on January 13th, 2025. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning a redevelopment agreement with Outwest Gallery and Cafe to provide neighborhood opportunity funds for property improvements at 5249 West Chicago Avenue in what was the 28th Ward is now the 37th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Alderman Mitchell, have anything you want to add to that?
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next matter is, uh, five communications regarding transfer of funds. Transfer of funds within the 6th Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number three, a transfer of funds within the Committee on Committees and Rules for the year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four, a transfer of funds within the 38th Ward Wage and Automatic Expense Allowance for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number five, a transfer of funds within the 41st Ward Wage and Automatic Expense Allowance account for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
And finally, item number six, a transfer of funds within the 44th Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Uh, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For Committee on Contract Oversight and Equity, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on Contracts, Oversight, and Equity. We held a meeting on Friday, January 10th, 2025, to consider item number S02024-0013659, a substitute ordinance for program manager service program responsibilities executed with local initiative support, cooperation, creation of quota maps, and lead management responsibility to over the quota managers. Mr. President, I move that the City Council incur the recommendation of the Finance Committee by the same roll call vote as item number one on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Second item was the subject matter hearing for the annual casino compliance report was heard. Uh, no votes was taken, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. The chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Monday, January 13th. The committee held a meeting and recommend passage of the following items. Item one on the report is ordinance dealing with the Class 6B Tax Center for Property located at 455 North Ashland Avenue in the 27th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two on the report is a resolution calling for a hearing on the implementation of the Enterprise Resource Planning Technology System. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For Committee on Housing and Real Estate, the chair recognizes Chair Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on January 7th, 2025. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of seven ordinances. These include various negotiated sale, land sales and acquisitions. The first item is from the Department of Fleet and Facility Management. Uh, Chair, the item number one is ordinance 2024-0014442, acquisition of property at 1751 North Harlem Avenue from Chicago Title and Trust Company Land Trust Number 802382648, dated January 22nd, 2020, for purpose of serving as Galewood Mount Clare Chicago Public Library Branch in the 29th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following is from the Chicago Department of Transportation. Uh, item number two is ordinance 2024-0013109, acquisition of various properties for Englewood Nature Trail Project in the 15th and 16th Wards. Natural Trail Project in the 15th and 16th Wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following items from the Department of Planning and Development are grouped together for convenience. Items three and four are land sales under the former ANLP City Program. Ordinance 2024-0013736 in the 8th Ward and Ordinance and Substitute Ordinance 2024-0013742 in the 28th Ward. Items five through seven are land sales under the current Chi Block Builder Platform. These include ordinances substitute, um, substitute ordinance 2024-0013768, ordinance 2024-0013744, and ordinance 2024-0013082 with land sales in the 7th, 16th, and 28th Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Thank you for the convenience. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair. For the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on January 7, 2025 to consider 17 ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the 11th, 16th, 17th, 21st, 26th, 28th, 35th, 38th, 39th, 40th, 42nd, and 50th Wards. The committee has recommended passage of each of these items, O2024-0013131 and others ending in 133713, I'm sorry, the first one was 13337133461334541369313865138701389014054141621416414248142491425914251444714447 Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as the item number one in the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
O2024-0014443, a substitute ordinance to amend Chapter 4-4 prohibiting sale of cannabis hemp products and issuance of new or renewal of existing tobacco dealership license in Midway Regional Airport. Mr. Mayor, Alderman Quinn and Alderwoman Tabarez would like to speak on this matter.
Very well. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez. Okay. Thank you for your politeness. The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm eager to co-sponsor this ordinance that will ban smoke shops in the Midway region of the city. I'm honored to join my colleague Alder Tabarez in co-sponsoring this important effort. I also want to thank Chair Silverstein for her support, leadership, and getting all the players together to discuss this critical ordinance. I want to thank my colleagues on the Licensing Committee that passed this ordinance out of committee last week. There's been much debate about these hemp products. While it's currently stalled, there's a statewide effort underway to prevent these hemp shops from marketing to underage kids and selling unregulated products. The state is looking to force these shops to comply with the same requirements as state sanctioned cannabis shops. These smoke shops are constantly popping up throughout the city and state, and it's time we regulate them. In fact, these products should have never been sold in our city in the first place. In 2012, years before the 2018 Farm Bill, which created the regulatory loophole that is being exploited and that we are now seeking to close, the City of Chicago, the City Council banned the sale of synthetic marijuana. We are not preempted under federal or state law, but for whatever reason, the city stopped enforcing this law and allowed these products to proliferate our communities. I understand there may be some concerns about enforcement of that ban, but we as a city must show our constituents that we can be responsive, enforce laws this body adopts. Simply put, if these products are sold, one of three things is likely happening. These businesses are selling cannabis without a dispensary license in violation of state law. They're selling synthetic marijuana in violation of our law, or they're engaging in misleading deceptive or even fraudulent practices by selling a mislabeled product. On the southwest side, these janky stores, as they were recently called in one media outlet, are popping up everywhere without any warning, communication with my office, collaboration with our community, or our commander of the 8th District. This is completely unacceptable. They are not good actors, and they do not belong in our communities. I'm worried that it's just a matter of time that there is an issue at one of these shops. Mayor, we do not have the police presence on the southwest side to handle any disturbances that may occur at these locations. As you know, we've been fighting for a new police district on the southwest side because of the severely low police to resident ratio in our neighborhoods. In fact, it's the worst at nine, nine residents per 10,000, uh, nine officers per 10,000 residents. I fully understand the need to find additional revenue in our city, but this type of business should not be our go-to resource. We should not be putting our kids in harm's way to make a fast buck. We won't stand for this on the southwest side. We're a family community, 90% of the area consisting of single-family homes. We have the largest population of CPS students in the city. Alderman Tabarez and I know our communities well. We understand their desire to grow healthy families and thriving communities. We have more than 30 letters of support from local schools, elected officials, and community groups that want to see this smoke shop ban in place, including Kennedy High School, John Hancock, Hubbard High School, St. Daniel the Prophet, Burn Elementary, Kinsey Elementary, Pasture Elementary, Twain Elementary, Door Elementary, St. Nicholas of Talentine Elementary, Grimes, Hurley, Peck Elementary, Sorwana Elementary, Lee Elementary, Hale Elementary, St. Mary's Star of the Sea Elementary, St. San Ferroza Elementary, our elected officials, State Representative Angie Guerrero Poyar, our State Senator Mike Perforio, Jason Huff, Al Cachatello, Mark Hamberlin from the 8th District Police Council, our newly elected School Board of Education, Angel Gutierrez, our community organizations, the Garfield Ridge Neighborhood Watch, Cap Speed 822, the Midway Chamber of Commerce, the Videm Park Civic League, the Latino Organization of the Southwest, the 8th District Court Advocacy Chairperson Barbara Ziegler, Cap Speed 812, United Business Association of Midway, the West Lawn Neighborhood Watch, the Clearing Night Force. I hope our colleagues will support us in this regional effort to keep our kids and our streets safer. These smoke shops cater dangerous products to children and do not belong in our streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
I'd like to thank Alderman Quinn for bringing this issue to the forefront and Chairwoman Silverstein for allowing it to be heard in committee. This measure gives residents greater input in the placement of businesses that have been shown to target teens and younger children in the marketing of their product. But this product is not candy. It's not toys or happy meals. It's a highly dangerous and unregulated drug that endangers those who consume it. Our wards are comprised, are composed of neighborhoods where families choose to settle and raise children. They have major concerns with the opening of these businesses in their communities where their children see these products multiple times a day, on their way to and from school, to the library, and to the grocery store. Parents want their kids to avoid these shops and stay away from the dangerous products they sell. But this is difficult when the product themselves are sold in wrapping made to look like candy in a candy store. This measure will help to ensure our children in our wards are kept safe from these dangerous and unregulated products and help to save lives. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O2024-0014040, a substitute ordinance to disallow additional late-hour liquor licenses in the 26th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O2024-0013694 regarding pedaling in the 21st Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O2024-0012863 was held in committee. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the chair recognizes Chair LaSpada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, which a meeting was held on Tuesday, January 14, 2025. The committee held a subject matter hearing with the Chicago Department of Transportation on the 2023 crash report pursuant to Section 9-116 of the Municipal Code and the yearly update on complete streets pursuant to Section 10-14 of the Municipal Code. No votes were taken on these topics. Before the committee, there were also 96 routine traffic items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. For the Committee on Police and Fire, the chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which meeting was held on January 14, 2025. Committee recommends the passage of the following items. Item number one was the appointment, the reappointment of Stephen Block as a member of the Police Board. Item number two, the appointment of Arlet Porter as a member of the Police Board. Item number three was the appointment of Cynthia Velazquez as a member of the Police Board. And item number four was the appointment of Tyler Hall as a member of the Police Board. Mr. President, if there are no objections, I move the passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Public Safety, the chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Pardon, uh, just a second. Yes, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, um, we just realized that there was one ordinance in the License Committee that was omitted, and that is 142.
Leave from the body to return to two previous committees ago to make sure that we complete all of the items. Please continue.
Um, an additional liquor moratorium that was not read out is, um, O2024-14260. Um, I move that the city concur in the same recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number.
Madam Chair, can you read that item number again?
Um, the last numbers are 14260.
14264?
60, 14260.
Oh, I see it at the top here. 14260.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion is for the passage of that item with the most favorable roll call and the associated failed attempt for the motion to reconsider?
Yes, it is.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The chair returns back to Chair, um, Hopkins for the Committee on Public Safety.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held a meeting on January 15, 2025. The committee recommends passage of the following items, the October 24 Rule 45 report in addition, Resolution Number 14213, adoption of the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and associated city annex for the 2024-2029 planning cycle to maintain continued eligibility for federal grant funding through the FEMA mitigation grant assistance programs. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, the chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on January 14, 2025. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Pages, item one, pages two through five includes 34 ordinances and one amendment for miscellaneous items introduced by the local alderman for wards 3, 10, 14, 22, 24, 25, 27, 28, 29, 30, 32, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 43, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49. Page six includes items, substitute ordinance 2024-0014438, a subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 18th Ward, and item ordinance 2024-0014437, a re-subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 20th Ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final Committee, Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. The chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on January 9, 2025. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains text amendment 02024-0011209 that amends Municipal Code Section 17-6-0400 that prohibits eating and drinking establishments in Plan Manufacturing District Number Two from being larger than 8,000 square feet. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains text amendment 02024-0013531 that amends Municipal Code Section 17-13-1003M that allows shared housing units and non-conforming owner occupied dwelling units in Manufacturing District. I move passage of this item by the same motion and if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving on, pages one through 11 contains various map amendments in the first, second, third, fifth, sixth, 10th, 11th, 17th, 21st, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 31st, 33rd, 36th, 44th, 47th, and 48th Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Did you mention 27?
Yes.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, lastly, page 12 contains various large size over 100 square feet in area 24 feet above grade in the 28th, 30th, and 42nd Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For the agreed-upon calendar, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received from the clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of 99 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from the following alderpersons. Alderperson LaSpada, Alderperson Hopkins, Alderperson Robinson, Alderperson Hall, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Moore, Alderperson Mosley, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Fuentes, Alderperson Conway, Alderperson Ramirez Rosa would like to speak at this time on one of the resolutions that's in the agreed calendar.
Very well. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much. Um, I ask for this point of personal privilege because January 11th would have marked my, uh, late father Carlos M. Rosa's 75th birthday. Unfortunately, after a three-year-long battle with stomach cancer, we lost him on January 21st of 2015, just a month before I was elected alderman. And, uh, when I took office that May, unfortunately, uh, forgive me, papi, I did not pass a honorary resolution uh, honoring him at that point in time. Uh, but as we enter the 10th year of his passing, um, I worked with my siblings and with my mother to honor him with this resolution. And so I just wanted to stand, uh, to honor the life and legacy of Carlos M. Rosa. He was one of the founders of Chicago Bilingual Educators. He was one of the first bilingual educators here in the City of Chicago. He was the first member of his family to graduate from college with honors from UIC. Uh, and when he retired, he was the highest ranking Puerto Rican in the Chicago Public Schools, serving as the Director of the Department of Research and Evaluation. Uh, and as we were reflecting on his life this past Saturday, when he would have turned 75, we were actually looking through some of his belongings, and we found a resolution from the Chicago Board of Education, uh, where Michael Scott, the father of, uh, one of my colleagues, Monique Scott, uh, honored my father when he retired from Chicago Public Schools in 2005 in his role uh, as Board of, uh, Education. in his role as Board of Education President. Michael Scott delivered that honor. So I want to just stand to rise, to honor my father, Carlos M. Rosa. He lived an extraordinary life, and thank you for allowing me the privilege to do this. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Mr. President, Alderperson Moore would like to have a few words on his resolution.
Very well. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be as brief as possible. First of all, I want to thank you for, on January fourth, recognizing it as Derrick Rose Day in Chicago with your resolution that you did on behalf of the City of Chicago. It was a great resolution, and thank you for it as well. But since he was also from the seventeenth ward and Inglewood community, we presented him at the Simeon Game, and I just want to officially, on record, recognize him as the official son of Inglewood, and that's what this resolution does. And hopefully, myself, along with who's still with me, he laughing over there because he's still with me. Alderman Will Hall gave me a hall pass to come to my own high school. And Alderman Mosley still with me and doing that resolution. But we're hoping that we'll be working after we find out that date that the Bulls will be retire, I mean, retiring his jersey, that we then can hopefully bring him before the entire City Council this year. So that's what we'll be working on. So thank you so much as we recognize Derrick Rose as the official son of Inglewood. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you. Alderperson Nugent, Alderperson Lawson, Alderperson Gardner, and Alderperson Clay also have resolutions, and I move all of these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Alderwoman Harris. Now for new business, the Clerk will call the wards beginning with the fiftieth ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Silverstein has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifty-seven twenty-four North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Haddon has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Two-Eve Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alderman Manaha Happenworth has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Argyle Street, excuse me, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the forty-seventh ward wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Martin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to disallow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Damon Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderpersons Martin and Scott have a proposed resolution for amendment of members of the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight for the years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven by removing Alderperson Scott as a member, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Martin has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-four fifteen West Montrose Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Martin also has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on alternative response modeling for parking violations, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderperson Lawson has proposed ordinance for a one-time exception from the Wrigley Field Night Game Ordinance to allow a musical performance on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash four dash three thirty-one by prohibiting sale, barter, or exchange of cannabinoid hemp products within defined downtown area, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on License and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section two dash eight dash zero eighty requiring Chicago Transit Authority President or Executive Director nominees to provide testimony before the Committee on Transportation and Public Way fifteen days prior to appointment, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the forty-second ward wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Four by modifying section four dash four dash three thirty-one to prohibit cannabinoid hemp products within city and section four dash sixty-four dash five fifteen to prohibit issuance of new retail tobacco dealer licenses within midway residential area, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees called, the Committee on License and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Seventeen by modifying various sections and adding a new section fourteen dash fourteen dash zero six, zero one six F establishing permitting requirements for definition of intoxicating hemp retailers, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Napolitano has a proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Allen J. Feric Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderpersons Nugent and Harris have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section eighteen dash twenty-nine dash six oh three point three point six requiring trapping of water mains to perform only by Department of Water Management or contracted licensed plumbers, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Spazado has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the thirty-eighth ward wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Viegas has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter two dash twenty-five by adding a new Article Three establishing Chicago Center for Business Ownership Succession and Employee Ownership, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderpersons Viegas, Vasquez, and Haddon have a proposed ordinance authorizing the creation of the Chicago Social Housing Corporation to enhance affordable housing options in the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Housing, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for support of a Class Seven B tax incentive for the property at seven 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 West Chicago Avenue, the Ballers Chicago Operating Company LLC, GLP Capital LP Project Site Owners, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Economic Capital Development and the Committee on Finance, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for expansion of Enterprise Zone Four, which is referred to the Committee on Finance, and a proposed resolution to call for the Chicago-based companies to maintain, promote, and strengthen diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portions of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Conway has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter two dash four by adding a new section two dash four dash one thirty entitled Appointments to Sister Agencies, requiring City Council Approval, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Wagispack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-six forty-two North Jones Street, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Wagispack and Alderperson Silverstein have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section two dash one fifty-six dash zero eighty prohibiting mayor and executive officials from serving as employee or employer contractor of any city agency, sister agency, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Ethics and the Committee on Rules, matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Telfiero has proposed ordinance for the annual appropriation, amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the twenty-ninth ward wage allowance automatic expense account for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Irvin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portions of South Oakley Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Fuentes has a proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the twenty-sixth ward wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-five, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Mosley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Five by adding a new chapter five dash twenty-five prohibiting prohibition of leasing licensing to another tenant for operation of grocery, pharmacy, or drugstore, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderperson Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at three twenty West Thirty-Fifth Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Beal has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the ninth ward automatic expense wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Beal and others have a proposed resolution to call for hearings to investigate the impacts of a recent credit downgrade to the city's finances and borrowing costs, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Beal also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash four dash three thirty-one to prohibit cannabinoid hemp products within Pullman Roslin area, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on License and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderpersons LaSpata has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-four fifty-five West Fullerton Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Yes, you finish? I understand. Did you finish all of the? Yeah, very well. The Chair recognizes, I think we're missing one. In the meantime, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was one item referred in the forty-fourth ward. It was referred to the Committee on Zoning. I believe it should have been referred to the Committee on License, and I wanted just to make that correction before the end of intros.
So.
That's, that's why I don't want to send it to rules. I think the wrong committee was called.
All right, thank you. The Clerk, the Clerk will make that correction.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That was a, an err on the clerk's part.
Also, Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter eight dash sixteen by adding a new section, section eight dash sixteen dash zero sixty-four regarding cannabinoid hemp products offenses involving minors, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Two committees called, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk, for the approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell. The Journals, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the Journals from the December eleventh, twenty twenty-four and December thirteen, twenty twenty-four meetings. The move had to be improved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm aware of two pieces of unfinished business, both of which are filed by Alderman LaSpata, and I defer to him.
Very well. The Chair then recognizes Alder LaSpata for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I would today defer on bringing forward item SO twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one zero nine nine zero, I would ask favorable consideration of SR twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one zero nine two two, which is a call for the establishment of an inter-agency working group to assess and redesign speeding enforcement structures and practices. I would move passage of this item by a roll call vote. I appreciate anyone's interest in speaking on this matter, and I would reserve the right to close.
Very well. So just for clarification, the first item, item, the substitute, the motion, the substitute item zero two zero two three dash zero zero one zero nine nine zero to amend the municipal code in section nine dash twelve dash zero seven zero regarding speed limits, you wish to hold that item?
For today, yes.
For today, very well. But you are wishing for a roll call vote on the second item, which is SR twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one zero nine nine two.
Correct.
Is that correct? And then you're also offering an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, sir.
You are quite generous today. Does anyone wish to speak to the second item? Okay. The Chair recognizes Alder Hatten.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it brief. Just, oh, take my time, all right. A colleague from the nineteenth ward says I've got all the time in the world. I just want to commend Alderman LaSpata. I know that a lot of work has gone into this. I'm looking forward to supporting this resolution. This would create a working group to, you know, assess the traffic safety pieces that I think we're all concerned about. I know that my community, the forty-ninth ward, and a lot of our colleagues in the Progressive Caucus, you know, we're looking forward to moving forward with the full Vision Zero piece. But I know that the working group is going to help us to have some more discussions. And so I appreciate Alderman LaSpata for continuing his work on this effort and, you know, would urge my colleagues to vote in support of the resolution, which just creates our working group so that we can all continue to fine-tune, improve, and move towards the traffic safety, pedestrian safety issues that Alderman LaSpata and our advocates have tirelessly worked for so that we can have a safer Chicago for everyone who uses our streets. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to join Alderwoman Haddon and commend Alderman LaSpata for the work being done. In talking to a lot of our colleagues, I think most of our colleagues in principle, I haven't heard anyone say we need to raise the speed limit. I think some members did very much have questions, and so I think it's very mindful and really, I'm grateful for Daniel to really put forth the working group resolution. I think for the folks who have questions that want to just kick the tires, no pun intended, on what we're trying to do here, it's a really good way to do it. If folks have questions about the cost associated, how it would be enforced, I think the working group is something that members can largely agree on. So I would also ask our members here to support the resolution so we can then get those answers that I think will lead to even more support from this council to make sure we keep the public safe when we think about pedestrians, kids, seniors, and everyone else literally is trying to cross the street. So thank you very much for your work, and I'd also ask for the body to support it. Thank you.
Very well. Are there any other orders that wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague Alderman LaSpata for the work that he's done on this issue. Definitely one of the biggest issues that I hear about most from our neighbors is the speed at which people are driving. And I am in full support of this working group. I think that is not only just for our colleagues, but for the people of the city of Chicago, who we owe a very comprehensive and complete plan for considering a change of this nature. So I look forward to actively participating to make sure that we are putting together a plan and that we're asking all of the right questions and ensuring that we're making responsible decisions on behalf of the people of the city of Chicago. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other orders? The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution establishing the working group for this. As many of you do know, I do not, at this time, support the ordinance that was being presented. But I do believe, I want to thank Chairman LaSpata for, you know, being a little, you know, holding back on this so that we can have more discussion as we've all talked about this. So do appreciate, appreciate his diligence in this, and we'll support this resolution as we work through this various issue. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Mr. President, I too support the idea of working this out. It wasn't something I was able to support. I appreciate your passion, Daniel. The world has gone mad and crazy. But when you drive, I can't imagine a guy that's on a bike all the time, all the times people are honking and giving you the finger and tell you to ride your bike on the sidewalk when you should be driving in the street. So I welcome the idea to work this out. It's also great to see my colleagues be back on the safety bandwagon and everything. So hopefully, we can work on some other things for more safety for the residents of the city of Chicago. But thank you, Mr. President.
Very well. All right, finally, then the Chair recognizes Alderman LaSpata.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of three items that passed through my committee back in October. I am grateful always to the full membership of my committee and to all of you who recognize that as a city, we are not succeeding at keeping our residents safe as they go through the daily round. safe as they go through the daily rounds of their days. Whether you are walking, biking, driving a car, we know that it is not safe out there. We just passed through another year where 133 Chicagoans died as they were moving around the daily rounds of the city for them. I also want to be clear. We know through the work of CDOT, through the work that other cities have done, that what we have told people is a safe speed to drive is not true. We know that driving 30 miles per hour, enforced at 35 miles per hour, costs people lives. The city's own traffic crash report that just came out confirms that 68% of crashes involve a high rate of speed. That said, I know that there's a lot of justifiable reticence around what this means for enforcement in the city. For far too long, people have seen racial inequities on how citations are issued, on who gets cited, even in communities that are not their own. You deserve a down payment that addresses the anxieties and concerns of your communities, that when we talk about lowering the speed limit, we mean that in a truly equitable and transparent and meaningful way. Whether that looks like directing more of these revenue funds towards improving those intersections, whether it looks like new modes of enforcement that involve more behavior change in education than taking dollars out of Chicagoans' pockets, we can and are committed to exploring all of those, to changing how we do enforcement in the city. And I hope and believe that this is the first step that restores trust for you, for your residents, for your communities, that as, hopefully in the future, we move as Seattle, Minneapolis, Boston, San Francisco, New York, Los Angeles, Oak Park, Evanston have already done towards a 25 mile per hour speed limit, we do that in a way that has restored and earned trust through this commitment. With that said, I do ask passage of this resolution by a roll call vote.
Very well. Thank you. There's been a request for a roll call vote. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use the e-device, hit refresh. All right, I will now call on those for a voice vote who did not cast their vote using the e-device system. Alderman Wagaspak. Wagaspak is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Aldimer Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is a yes. Have all those who voted? All right, the vote is now closed.
Very well. There are 49 yays, 1 nay. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed say no. This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, anything else? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. As was previously noticed with the city clerk, as a Rule 41 as well, and in accordance with Rule 41, and in order to limit collateral captures by ICE in our communities as they search for their priority targets, I move to discharge from community, oh, from committee, O 2023-...
Thank you very much, Alderman Lopez. We are currently under unfinished business.
Okay.
We have miscellaneous business that is coming up next, in which we'll make sure that we recognize you. Oh, okay. All right, very well. Alderman Mitchell, one more time, is there anything else?
No, there...
Are you aware of anything else?
I'm not aware of any...
Okay, all right. If you're not aware of any other unfinished business...
It's low for here.
All right, very well. Thank you very much. Now then, if you are not aware of any other unfinished business, we can now go to miscellaneous business. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am aware of one item of miscellaneous business. It was filed by the automatic duo of Lopez and Tabarez, and I defer to them.
Very well. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
On behalf of the dynamic duo, yes. And in accordance with Rule 41, in order to limit collateral capture by ICE in our communities as they search for their priority targets, I move to discharge from committee, O 20, O 2023-0004222, an amendment to the welcoming city ordinance by a roll call vote, and I will call the question on the matter.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
To table the motion to discharge by a roll call vote.
Very well. So there is a motion on the floor. Just a second. There was a motion to discharge an item. There is a subsequent motion to lay that item on the table, which is permitted by our rules. So the motion to lay this item on the table, and you are asking by a roll call vote?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Very well. So there's a motion to lay the motion that was previously offered up by Alderman Lopez. There was a motion to lay that item on the table. So if you vote no, you wish to proceed with the initial motion to discharge. If you vote yes, to lay this item on the table, you wish not to vote on the discharging of the item. So a no vote means you wish to return back to the initial motion to discharge this item. If you vote yes, you wish not to take up this item through the motion to discharge.
Ready to open the vote?
Madam Clerk, yes. Please use your e-vote applications to record your votes at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Please refresh your device. Please refresh your device. The voting is now open. I will now call on those who have not used the e-device for a voice vote. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Mosley, not present. Aldermember Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. All have voted. The voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 39 yays, 11 nays. The motion to lay the item in the motion on the table has passed. Alderman Mitchell, are there, is there a motion to reconsider, Alderman Mitchell?
Motion to reconsider the vote.
All right, there's a motion to reconsider this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed say no. Motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, anything else?
Mr. President, except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware any further miscellaneous business.
Very well. Then for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
Hand it up, an ordinance to the clerk, set in the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Beordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North Listowel Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance in the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The meeting is adjourned.